Good morning. We call this morning's immediate order. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, also the consent agenda, which has four items in it.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second approve the agenda. Any discussion on any items? All in favor?
Aye.
Citizens to be heard. Is any citizens, the audience, that want to be recognized for anything that's not on the agenda? Steve, anything on the computer?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
We've got a motion to second approve the bills and vouchers for the last two weeks. Any discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got minutes from June 20th into 27th to approve. Okay, we've got a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
And we got a second. Any discussion on any of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, request to approve to alter the landscaping plan for the resource recovery. Got Joe and Cory?
Morning, Mr. Chair and Board. Thank you for having us.
Morning.
We are here this morning to request an alteration to our landscaping plan at the Resource Recovery Center. If you've been out there, the weeds kind of taken over. Some of the pig weed and stuff like that is like three feet tall. So we've had it sprayed, and we would like to go to an alternate plan where it's just grass rather than the pollinator garden, because I don't think we will be able to control the weeds in the pollinator garden. With the campus coming up out there and the other two facilities being built, I don't want to look like a mess. So we would like to request that we purchase the seed, and Joe has a plan for the seed.
Yeah, originally, we worked with Soil and Water to have a plan to have native grass grow out right in the front there. We've also have, there was a secondary, a second plan to work with the City of Moorhead to plant some beelawn grass along all the outer edges of the facility, and we're finding that both of those plans are going to be very tough to maintain with spraying of weeds and everything, and we want to keep it nice and neat. So our goal is to go back to the original turf seed that we were going to plant, and there won't be any added costs or anything to this. And like Cory said, the seed is the only cost of reimbursing soil and water for that, and that's an amount of 700. Do you have that? I think it was 700.
$705 is the cost of the seed.
Yep. And with that, I've actually worked with Tony and Kevin, Kevin Kastenberg at Soil and Water, and we're going to be teaming up with Matt Jacobson. We have another county-owned land that we're going to be cleaning up and planting that same plant. So we're going to be shifting the soil and water plan over to another land, but as far as the City of Moorhead, we're going to do the turf option, so.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Thank you. This was definitely something that, when we originally discussed the pollinator plan, the site outlook was substantially different. Now we're moving towards two new county facilities up there, and in talking with staff, having a taller, taller grass out there really proposes an issue with rodent control, and that's the other piece, is we want to make sure that we're not only being good neighbors with the weeds and not having weeds blowing into our neighboring fields, but also maintaining the rodent control out there. I think it's also really important to note, we're not eliminating the addition of pollinator habitat in Clay County. Using the seed on an additional Clay County-owned property only moves that seed to a different area of the county, so it will be adding additional pollinator. It just is not the effective site for it. And really, if you understand weeds, I appreciate staff's ability to address this before. Those weeds have thousands of seeds. We're mowing it quickly before it develops that, because once you get that weed seed bed in your soil, it is really, really difficult to mitigate that going forward. So I am certainly, I know there's other discussion, but I support this request.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I know we were reached out to regarding this. There was some concerns about being able to spray those, and we planted trees, and all those things just aren't mixing well together. I know originally that there were members of the SWAC committee who were very involved and supported the original idea of the pollinator there, and I think the original intent was good. But I did, you know, in talking with Commissioner Mojo, and they needed some direction early on because they were just getting out of hand, and we basically had said, let's go ahead and spray those weeds and get this going and move to that alternate. One of the other things to keep in mind is also on the substance use facility area, we do, as part of the B3 requirement, we do have a small area that's close to the pond that will have some sort of alternative seeding on it as well. Is that correct, Joe?
Correct, yep, yep.
You know, so there still will be something there in that regard, but it's going to be closer to where we have those ponds. But I think we do need to keep this under control. We're going to have a, you know, a 24-hour-a-day operation there that's going to have people staying there, and rodent control is going to be a thing we want to avoid, so. I also support the request.
Is that like a motion and a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I will, I will second that.
Oh, thank you.
And just a clarification, in that motion to approve the planting of the lawn grass, are we also approving the transfer of the seeds to?
Yep.
The other facility?
Yes, and I do have that.
Not facility property?
Yes, and I have that actually budgeted within my landscaping budget.
So my motion would reflect that as well.
Very good.
Just one other quick question. So the other site, do you know where that is?
Yeah, what's it called, Commissioner?
The Crestwood site that we worked with Soil and Water on in partnership with Pheasants Forever. I believe we'd planted seven acres early.
Yeah.
And it would be an additional several.
Yeah, and we, Matt and I were out there last week, and we have, it's a little bit overgrown, so we have plans to clean it up and mow it down, and then create this one-acre plot.
That's a great site. Thank you.
Have you thought about paving everything out there?
We've thought about it.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion to alter the landscaping plan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
We'll get her done. Okay, request to lease additional vehicle for Milton Maintenance Department.
Yeah, so what I'm asking today is, the last couple of years, my position has taken, taken me around the county a lot more, and currently I don't have a department-issued vehicle to use. I use my, use the guys as the cruise trucks and stuff when I need it, and then my own vehicle. So we were planning on asking for, to add this additional vehicle to the 2024 budget, and then at the same time, I had been working with Enterprise and another department to lease a Chevy Tahoe, and that's taken a year. I'm finding it takes a year to get most anything you want to get, especially at a government discount price. So that was just coming in, but then it was determined they didn't need it. So I have a vehicle that was just coming in now, and so my idea was is to ask to have that part of our maintenance fleet, and by doing that, I do, working with Lori on that, my internal services can cover a majority of this cost moving forward in 2024, and all of it in 2023, any additional costs. But there will be, in all transparency, a small increase in my internal services line to help cover this. So I'm in 2024, so I'm asking to move forward with, I guess, this thing is supposed to arrive in a couple of days, so it's, that's why it's kind of a, more of a time crunch than that, so.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Joe's department really has, the scope of the services that your department provides has really grown in the last few years as our facilities have changed, and the locations of those facilities have changed. And if there's any department that needs a vehicle of this capacity for the work that you do, it certainly would be yours. I know, as discussed earlier with the other departments, that this is really quite a reasonable price for the product that you're getting, and I know while it will be a slight increase in your budget, I think that should be a given, given how much you, the work has expanded within your department. So I'll make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
We've got a motion to second as far as discussion. This isn't involve taking the vehicle home?
No, nope. This is purely for when I come to work and using it during work hours. So, and then also, it's if I'm gone or whatever, it's still kind of considered part of the maintenance fleet, too, so people can use it when I'm gone, and so it's.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, so Joe, you're saying you're going to have to have a slight alteration to your internal service count on your budget, but wouldn't, because that vehicle was originally slated for, I believe it was public health, won't theirs actually go down?
Well, no. Originally, we thought that, but they, the vehicle they were going to replace has already been bought and paid for, and they're going to keep that vehicle. It's a used vehicle that they're keeping, and so there's no trade-off that way as far as that going down, or maybe Steve.
I think maybe what Commissioner Campbell's saying is that payment was going to be made in a different department.
Yeah.
Now shifted to you.
Yeah, right, right.
So, yeah, so from the, from the, there's really no, no new cost that wasn't already authorized when that, when that vehicle was originally purchased.
Right, and, yep.
So even though your line item is going to go up, another line item is going to go down.
Yes, this was approved a year ago to order this, and it was.
Right.
Yes, I get you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I kind of do this to talk to the taxpayer once in a while.
Sure, oh yeah. And for that, too, just this, by ordering the Chevy Tahoe a year ago, the resale values on Tahos are really good. I had a analysis done through Enterprise, and in three years, if we sell this vehicle, we're going to end up breaking even, they feel. So this is actually a pretty good deal on this, and doesn't always happen that way with this, but this one seems to be a good deal, so.
And just, that's just another reason why, as we discussed and decided on location for the DMV. It's just, it's just another way that we're reducing from even to have more and more of this happen by having buildings scattered all over everywhere. So I, this is another example of how that helps that, so.
Okay, excuse me. Sarah, did we have a motion on that? We did, huh? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good.
Thank you, Board.
Happy traveling. Okay, next thing we got is request to approve to fill the vacant assistant, Connie attorney position. Milton.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Unfortunately, we have a vacancy coming up August 1st. I think my last, probably three of four vacancies have all come by way of somebody moving to the Twin Cities, and in this case, a really excellent attorney in my office, but her husband has a new opportunity in Twin Cities, and they're moving, so we will have a vacancy and look to fill it. It is a budget position already.
Overapproval. Second.
We've got a motion to second to approve the position. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay. Good work on that. Okay, we got budget presentations. Going to start off with information systems there. Mr. Mark Sloan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mark.
It's my privilege and honor to launch into budget season 2024.
I think you've got those information sheets in front of you.
Yeah, hopefully that. One of the things I just wanted to mention about, as we start with talking about budgets, I just was noticing the last few agenda items, is all of us department heads spend a great deal of effort to keep track of exactly how we're expending the resources that were provided and make sure that we're doing it the best we possibly can. So when it comes to budget season, we spend a significant amount of time trying to figure out what's the, what do we need to do to do the tasks that we're asked to provide. For information services this year, which actually be coming in January, will be called the GIS and Communications Departments, if you remember the action we had a couple of weeks back. We're not asking for any new requests. We are in pretty good position. We're well, I think our staff is working well. We've got the stuff that we need. We're doing all the things we need to. So we aren't asking for anything new. We're going to continue with the programs and the systems that we have in place. However, like most people have noticed, things are costing more. And what we're learning is, as we started looking into what things are going to cost us next year, is there's some increases in some of these line items specifically driven by the cost of goods, or services are going up. I ended up with about a 6% increase in my overall budget, about, I don't know, 2/3 of that, I suppose, is salaries, but the rest is just basically driven by the cost of what we're doing. So we aren't asking for any new, anything new. We're just going to try to continue providing the best service that we possibly can and be as financially responsible as we possibly can with those resources. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, maybe just a point of order from, that's a little bit different from previous years. The board is generally, when we've come out with this, we have union contracts that are out a lot of times for one, two, or three years, and we show that, that 3% as a potential cost, because this board doesn't approve that until December. The challenge, the interesting, I guess, the part we've had is the board has generally accepted that, and so in this year's presentations, a 3% increase is included in all of their, in all of their payments or all their salaries regular. From a work standpoint, it's easier, it's more challenging for Darren. Darren could back it out if that's where the board wishes, but rather than do it that way, it was, it is implemented in the, in the 3% this year, so I wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that, so when you see the 4.67%, 3% of that would be from this year, so.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
If I can, Mark, your department, I don't believe, sees a lot of turnover, do you?
Not recently, fortunately. We have had, but the last few years, we've been doing okay.
One of the, one of the things that, you know, I think it's important for us as a board to look at, too, when we're trying to establish all this stuff, is, is, you know, when we see these salary line items and all of the different things that go along with it, the para contributions and all of those things, we budget those as though those positions are full for the entire year. And, and then a lot of, you know, we have, over the course of the year in the county, we have a lot of turnover, and there gets to be some time that's involved with, before somebody can be replaced, so that some of those positions remain vacant. Now, I get it, sometimes there's a payout involved, but still, there's usually a net gain or net benefit to the, from the, right, expense standpoint, anyway. And so, you know, I think we need to be mindful of that, and I, and maybe going to you, Steve, I think, as we get all of these departments, I think a little review of, of what that turnover has looked like to, you know, again, if we're coming in and if we're trying to find ways where we can minimize the cost to the taxpayer, we need to be mindful of all of those different line items. I just, I'm bringing that out now because, and you're the, kind of the first one here, so.
Right, okay.
Well, Mark, you started that real good by saying that you're not going to change anything, and then you say you're always going to change 6%. Okay.
Yeah, right.
No, I agree too. You know, there's going to be a little cost increase there and stuff like that, so. Looks like you got presented a good budget there.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple other things I just wanted to provide, quick updates on while I'm here. County Surveyor Services, the RFPs for those, if you remember, we sent those out a month or so back. They're due next week. Our committee will look at those, and hopefully in a couple of weeks, they'll be back here with a recommendation, hopefully. And the other thing is, we finally have gotten, signed a date for our website redesign, and that's going to start at the beginning of August, so we'll be putting together a committee at that time for that, so.
On the travel expenses, what do you got, a convention coming up, or is that?
Yes. Actually, we have a, there's a major user conference in the GIS world that takes place, that we're going to send our GIS specialist to next summer, is the plan. I'll be back to ask for that later, but.
Okay.
Put it in the budget.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your presentation, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, you've got an example to follow now? Right, go for it.
Can you beat 6%?
Maybe, maybe.
The goal has been set.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I'm here to present the proposed 2024 budget for technology services. Jump right in here, starting at the top for miscellaneous revenue. We host a social services solution for 20 other counties in the state, and that brings in about a little over $61,000 for next year. It's been pretty consistent the last few years, but so far, this is our highest revenue proposed. Each of those counties add new additions onto the software, and each addition costs X amount of dollars based on the size of the population of the county. Going down to salaries, due to step increases in COLAs, we're, that'll increase, oh, just, just under $33,000 for next year. To some of the benefits, health insurance, things like that, adjusts as well. Our overtime salaries, we're going to reduce that down $1,500 from $6,500 down to $5,000, just to allow for some of that work we have to do after hours and weekends. Let's see. The next item that changes is association dues and memberships. I'm reducing that down about $850. We haven't, haven't hit that full 4,850 in a few years here, so we're going to keep that down and, you know, increase it in the future years if we need to. Let's see, the gas and oil will keep the same at $1,000 for our fleet vehicle that we have in our office. Our other professional services, if you recall, last year, we proposed a upgrade of the clocks in the courthouse here. That cost should now be removed, so I'm reducing that as well. So going from $181,000 down to $160,000. But then there's, so we save about $21,000 there, but then results of a $85,000 request for, this would be for FBI and BCA security requirements. This is one item I brought up to the PIC, and we discussed that. Our first option there was ruled out by the BCA, so now we're still continuing to look for other options, so this number might, more than likely will go down. But this also includes requirements for multi-factor authentication or increased multi-factor authentication for secure facilities for the criminal justice agencies in the county. So we'll get an update to that as we, as we hear it, but the proposed timeline from the BCA is October of this year to get that implemented, so. But we'll keep PIC involved, and then also you Commissioners as well, once we have a, something fine-tuned there. The next item, our training budget, we're going to reduce that down $2,000 for this next year. I think that gives us adequate amount of money for that. Equipment repair and maintenance, we're going to reduce that $10,000. Part of that is between other professional services and equipment repair and maintenance, we've been able to negotiate better pricing with some of our vendors, and some items even shifted over to other departments as they fit more, you know. One of the items is the correctional facility, and some of the UPS battery backup maintenance for the entire building somehow came into technology services, so we shifted that over to, to carry over there. Let's see. Traveling expenses, we'll keep the same. Jumping down to our data processing supplies, we're going to reduce that $5,000. We notice now after post-COVID, some of those day-to-day expenses like that can be reduced. There's not as much of a need now, as more, more staff are back in the office, so we're going to reduce that down as well. Our computer software, we're going to adjust that. That's going to move different items from other categories down into computer software, so we're just shifting from one account to another there.
Is this taken into account, the new ones that are going to go into detox center or substance abuse and also into the?
Initially, that, you know, come out of the initial project, so I'll account for that in future years. So, you know, for example, you know, we're, I think we're adding eight new workstations, so those computers, monitors, scanners, what have you, will, will then just get factored in. They don't need to be replaced for another four years, so we have some time to build up that, that fund.
Frank, I think your question, all of those, the new equipment that goes in those, those come out of the FFNE that's, that's part of the project, the original purchase of it. So the only thing that, the only thing that hits his is the future internal service contribution for replacing.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, our equipment over 500, we're going to reduce that down just slightly to, from $105,000 down to $100,000 for next year. We have enough, sufficient, in our equipment over 500 fund for internal services, we have some sufficient for, or sufficiencies for these servers and networking equipment. PCs and monitors, scanners, things like that, printers, there's still a need there, so going down to the next one, you'll see there's a request for $25,000 increase on internal services to account for some of those. Still playing catch-up on some of the PCs over the next few years, monitors and all that.
All right. Any questions? Go ahead.
You know, back drain, COVID, and they, you know, whether it was CARES or ARPA, there was a significant amount of funds that were put in, put in place for equipment purchases for your department. Back when that was done, did we start the increase in internal service fund for those items back then?
Last year for the 2023 request, I asked for $70,000 for that, but one of you Commissioners suggested we use some of the ARPA funds for that, for this laptop purchase that we just did this year. So the ARPA funds covered that, and now this $25,000 is to try to slowly start building that up again here.
I guess my, I guess my question is, is all of the items that were purchased with ARPA funds, eventually they're going to have, we're going to still have to?
Correct, yep.
Put in an internal, and that's with that 25?
Yes, yep, that's, that's a start of that, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else? Well, looks like pretty good. Now, Mark, you want to come back up here and try again?
Yeah, we have point two or three here.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Darren, you got a heck of a goal to come.
Oh.
You're starting off high.
No, no, actually, I'm in pretty good shape.
Okay.
I'll start off by saying I have no new requests this year, or for next year. There is one thing on other professional services. I added in the market study numbers for, for next year into my budget, because I didn't know where Lori was going to put that, if she was going to put that in the general fund, if she wanted me to carry it in my line. So I do show that in my line, but once I talk to Lori, she might want to move that into another line.
Are you talking about the cost of the market?
Just the cost of the, the, I called David Drown Associates, and they gave me an estimate of about $25,000 for the market study to do it. That doesn't mean whatever the outcome would be.
Right, right.
But, which is, I think it's about $1,000 over when we did it in 2019, so there hasn't been a huge increase in price to do that.
Did you put that in the other professional services line?
Correct, correct. So going through my budget, salaries, Steve has already explained that includes the 3%. You'll see that my health insurance did go down a little, which is surprising, because, only because one of my employees went from family to single coverage. Most of the rest of the stuff is pretty standard. There is one item on subscriptions. I'm not budgeting as much last year, and the reason for that is, if you remember, last year, I had a new requirement, request for $7,000 to look at a onboarding and recruiting module for HR. And after we got the demo, it looked like a pretty good system, but then when we got into it a little bit more. but then when we got into it a little bit more, we were going to have to have a data interface and which was going to cost more. And then UKG, our current HR payroll system that we just came, transitioned to last year, they have a onboarding and recruiting module that would fit right into UKG, but that, that's also much more money. And so after having a conversation with my team, I think we all decided that what we're doing right now, even though it's kind of a patchwork of things, it's working. And so I never did spend that $7,000 from last year. We decided to, to use what we already have, and even though it may be a little bit slower, it's working for us. And maybe in the future, we look at it a little bit bigger, a little bit more if the county gets, continues to grow and grow and grow. But that was the reason for that one change there. Like I said, in the other professional services, I, I put in there the 25,000 for the market study. Conference registration and workshops. I, after talking to Steve, I think I would want to also attend the AMC conferences, which I haven't in the past, so that's why that, there's an increase to that. Also, that includes the intergovernmental retreat. And the increase from $400 to $1,000, back in 2020 and 21, 22, a lot of these conferences were virtual, and so they didn't charge as much. But now we're back into in-person conferences, so that's the reason for that increase there. And that, that will also reflect down in the travel and expenses as, as going up. Right now, before COVID, I used to go to two MACROMA conferences and two MPELA. The MPELA is Minnesota Public Employees Labor Relations Association, and the MACROMA is the Minnesota County's Human Resources Management Association. They each have two conferences per year, and during COVID, they went more virtual, but now, of course, they're back to in-person as well. What I started doing is I, I go to two of those. I go one MACROMA, one MPELA, and then Anna goes to one MACROMA and one MPELA to kind of get her up to speed on some of this stuff. So that, that was just basically travel increases. The other addition would be, now that we have WECs, which is our, our benefits piece, they have four, four conferences or meetings down in Fergus Falls each year, and Anna goes to them. That's just a day back and forth, but that, so that's really only mileage. And then, of course, the two AMC conferences. So that's the increase in the travel and expenses. The rest of it, really no big change, so.
Darren, I, I like the fact that you're considering going to the AMC conferences. I think that would, it's a, that'd be a good deal for you to go to those. That's a, that's a wise choice.
Thank you.
You, you might learn some things there, and you might also be able to offer some things to others based on...
One of the things that came up for, for discussion was the last AMC conference, I guess, dealt a lot with HR things.
Yes.
And I thought, dang, I should have been there. So that's why...
Well, you might have a lot to offer there too for others, so.
Yep. Also, just a clarification on, on your comment, Commissioner Campbell, on the, you know, when we do the budget and people leave throughout the year. And when I do the budget, I send this out to the departments in the April timeframe. Actually, I send it to Lori, and then she sends it out. But then throughout the year, as people leave, a lot of the departments will update that, that budget line. But it doesn't include the, the people that are leaving like next year. So there is some adjustment for people that have left, and then we get a new hire. That, that, that line might go down based on...
They don't change the budget line, do they? Because I, I mean, that's, that's an established number. I mean, they...
Yeah, that, that...
Where it should show up is in the actual...
That, correct, correct. The, the actual number, when I, when I give the departments their budget sheet for salaries, that's a, that's a moment in time on who's there at that point. But as people leave throughout the year, the departments should be updating and taking that guy off or that year off that left and putting the new person that they hire in for, for this year, if that makes sense.
Now, you, you, excuse me, you got me a little confused here because during the course of the year, we, the county board sets a budget that starts the year.
Right.
And that basically is a, you know, the baseline of all of our spending and revenues. But, but that, department heads don't change that during the course of the year, do they?
I don't, I don't think they...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think what you're asking is, Darren is saying up until the, our, our budget is set in December, that may fluctuate. But it, once it's set, and you're right, it doesn't fluctuate throughout the year.
Yeah, so when we look at a, say, a quarterly update on our finances, the budgeted column is the original budget that we approved.
In December.
That, that never changes.
That's never changed.
Okay.
But he's saying that between, between now and then, if, if someone retired in social services, been there 25 years, Rhonda will take that person out and then put the lower wage in.
For the next year.
Correct.
Budget.
For the next year.
Yes.
Yep. Sorry for the, sorry for the confusion, but I wanted to make sure that there, there is some of that updating as this year, as before the budget is approved.
Okay, any other questions? Well, Steve, it looks like they got about $80,000, $74,000 in new requests, so you've got some work to do already.
We're just...
I hope you got some money coming in. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Darren.
Okay. We'll go into committee reports. Kevin, can you start us out this week?
I certainly can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back June 27th, we had our Moorhead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority Board dealing with diversion issues. We did approve at that meeting for county appraisals for, in, within Clay County. That, when we, when we approve those appraised values, that becomes basically the starting point of the negotiations with the property owners. We also, as usual, we get a property acquisition status report showing where we are in the process. We also hear from our land agents and get updates from them on things they're working on. And, and then we did have an assignment, agreed to an assignment, agreed, agreement with the, an assignment change. Then on the 28th, we had the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting, and we, we met at the Pope Douglas landfill, and we, we spent considerable time looking at the ash plant that they have there, where they take all of their ash and they take all the metals out of it. And then once that's done, you know, they, they do have a place where they send their metals. Of course, just like everything right now, the, the value of those metals is very small in terms of, of value. But then they do have all of this clean ash then that they're user, are looking for uses, the one big one being used in roads. And they're looking at the possibility of how that commingles with other gravel to make a Class 5 that goes underneath the roadbed. So far, they're not showing that the, the actual ash works in terms of the surface, but it does, what they're showing so far is it does make for a good solid base, mixed in with, with gravel, so. And the reason that we, we toured that, of course, is, is Prairie Lakes Solid Waste does obviously produce a lot of ash with what we burn there, and, and all of that ash currently goes to the Otter Tail County site, and, and we've been told that that has six to seven-year life left. So we're trying, we're looking at alternatives to where we can send that and what we can do with that ash, so.
Can that old ash be recovered, or, or is it just the new ash that can be used?
Well, the old ash is, yeah, it's pretty, it'd be, it'd be pretty hard to do that and pretty expensive to do that. I, you know, I, I could say, never say never, but, but I think the cost to do that would be, would be significant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then, you know, so we had an opportunity, there were a lot of other board members. That was basically an open meeting, and an awful lot of other board members were able to come. And we actually held our Prairie Lakes meeting in Pope Douglas and Huff, Huff, Huffman. And there were a lot of other board members that were able to come there and were really liked to hear what we were doing. Then on the, well, then I didn't have another meeting the entire week of July 4th. That was a nice holiday break. I think probably most of you also enjoyed that opportunity. And then on, yesterday, we did have a, we had a kickoff meeting for the DMV construction project. We spent a considerable amount of time. It was interesting. We had gone to an awful lot of time with design, and, and the state had, basically, when we did this, you remember if you recall, when we approved this, the state had, had sent a letter of interest saying that there would be willing participants once their lease is up. But it was kind of interesting because the, the original design that we had kind of had a layout in there, and, and it's, we finally got to hear from the person who actually has to operate the place, and, and there was a lot of proposed changes to what was originally designed. But fortunately, you know, there, Klein-McCarthy is going to work with them, and it's basically, it might just be moving a couple walls around, and it's not, nothing that would change in terms of a price change. But, but we did tell them that time is of the essence on this, and because we have a timeline that we're dealing with. And so they will be working together, and I think Joe Olson will be part of that deal, so. And then, then we did, also, then yesterday afternoon, we had our onsite construction meeting on the withdrawal management facility, detox facility. Short meeting, all is going well. The concrete work and the plumbing, I think, is all going to be done probably within this month, and, and we should start seeing steel going up, and you'll start seeing walls going up before you know it. I think, I think they want to have the thing entirely enclosed before fall, you know, before it freeze-up time. So, so it's on a really good, they're moving right along. Gertz has been keeping us well informed through emails and things like that if there's issues that come up, so. Yeah, all is going well, and that concludes my report.
Sir, did you have something that you wanted to bring forward, or?
Well, I'm down for a call through, what's here at non-precious. I was here for the track meeting, highway track.
Oh, okay, that's coming up after this, okay. Very good. Okay, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 27th of June, along with the rest of the Commissioners, we had the pleasure of helping serve at the employee picnic, annual picnic. Had a great time. Just a reminder what, what a great staff we've got. And special shout-out to Kirk Cannon for his display of his grilling and dancing skills that he gave to all of us, but we had a good time. On the 29th of June, I attended, or I virtually attended the MetroCog Housing Needs Presentation. A lot of good information was provided in that from the research on housing in the FM metro area. Obviously, we all know we've had a significant employment growth. Housing's not kept up. If we're going to sustain the growth, we're going to have come up with a housing supply. They identified some definite significant needs, among which is affordable rental housing. And as we all get older, senior housing need is strong. But I think they sent out a link, if anybody missed it, there's a link to, to get a review of it, and I think it's certainly worth the, the effort, the hour, hour and a half it took to watch that is very informative. On the 6th of July, I attended, virtually attended the Emergency Communication Network's Legislative and Governance Committee meeting. Once again, for the next session, we're going to work on reconvene, we've authorized the work group for the Statute 403, the statute that controls emergency communication through the state of Minnesota. We've reconvened that work group on that. They're going to try and work with the OSP, the providers. Once again, this is three, I want to say three years, maybe two, that we have gone before the legislature and tried to get an update to the statutes that designate the entire emergency communication network for the state, and we failed to get anything passed. We're operating with statute language that is incredibly out of date. It predates New Generation 911. It predates texting. It predates the potential of video. And I think one of the breakdown points, and we tried working with them last session, we'll work with them again, are the service providers who stand to lose a lot of money because we've gone from well over 90% hard-line calls coming into 91, 911 centers to where it's now 8% hard-line calls. And they have a system that bills for hard-line calls, and they, they want to continue with the income flow on that. So we'll see what we can do, hope to reintroduce legislation after bringing the OSPs to the table. Hope to do something in 2024. And we just reviewed some of the other legislative things that we've got to, got to be prepared for in the next session. And that meeting concluded. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. I too, just to, I was part of the, over at Metro Cog, the presentation on the Housing Affordability Study and the regional. Just to add a couple comments about that, that I made. I think at the end of all this analysis, which was, I think, close to 150 pages of data, anyway, the long and short of it is, the area studied was Delworth-Farquhar-Moorhead, West Farquharland Forest. And I think the, at the end of it, it was finally aiming toward the idea of establishing a regional housing committee of the entities that may look at how governmental entities can perhaps, along with having coordinated in ways to help in a more comprehensive, comprehensive way over these areas. So that'll be a discussion down the road. The report will be coming to Metro Cog next meeting on the 20th, and, and most likely they'll approve the report, but we'll see where it goes after that. Anyway, yeah, the, the problems are, that they point out, I mean, they've been growing for years, and, and the gap is getting bigger for affordability for rents and housing. But it's the nature of the world we're in right now with high growth in this area and, you know, trying to keep wages up with inflation and, and other costs. So that was a very good meeting, and look forward to hearing a lot more on it as time goes on. Then on, I too, had a week break, no committee meetings, the week of the 4th. Yesterday, I attended, or last night, the meeting of the Buffalo Red Watershed District. A few items I do want to mention, I think, are important. We had a hearing in the establishment of a new water, water management district up on Stinking Lake area. It's just northeast of Holly. It takes in about 41 square miles. They did put together and approve a area and a, and the fact that they will establish, excuse me, ways of collecting funds through that area... ways of collecting funds through that area to help with their operations and maintenance of the outlet structure. It's area of Hay Creek that goes into the Buffalo River, again, just northeast of Holly. Also, the one that I talked about last meeting, they had had the hearing on the same thing, the water, the new boundaries of the watershed management district for Stony Creek. That's at Project 80. That's just south of the Downer area a little bit. That just virtually floods in some areas every single year. So there is 5.4 miles of restoration going to be done on ditch 35. As soon as the, that was approved last night. And as soon as we get through the appeals process of 30 days, they'll start some of that work immediately. Also, to bring up, this had been an ongoing thing for the last few months, was the development of a new flood management policy for the district. Information during the flood season, send out to people what expectations are and for the watershed district. And then also that, and important to us, is that coordination between the Red River, the Buffalo Red in coordination with our highway department, the Northwest Emergency Management Team and the Sheriff's Department. So we'll make sure that, and, and I've talked to Justin enough to know that they're, they're coordinating and communicating on all that. And so hopefully we'll have a smooth spring in 2024. Also, as part of the meeting, the amended, as part of the settlement agreement between Buffalo Red and the diversion, they brought forth an amendment where the Buffalo Red is going, is going to allow work approved by the Buffalo Red for specific sites where the easement rights have already been acquired. And they can create earlier protection, in particular Clara Cemetery by Comstock. And then anything along the way, as they build the, the berm and everything, that those ditches on each side of the berm that are created, if there's a way to help or enhance in, in a safe, purposeful way, the drainage of those affected around that area, that those areas will be able to work on. And again, that, this will be a case by case as it moves along, but nothing without, until, no further work can be done until all the easements are granted. So it just very specific things like the cemetery and a few spots there that can try, start their planning work. That was in coordinated, coordination with Mr. Engineering and the lawyer, Tammy Norville, and, and Shockley with the diversion. So if there's any questions on that, just ask. But I, it, it seems very practical and, you know, makes sense. And unanimously, the, the Red River, the watershed board was in, in, okay with all that, with that amendment. And then last, Mark Hanson, who we appointed, was our last appointee to the Buffalo Red as a manager, is not going to seek to rerun. So, and, and I think it's the end of August is my understanding, that term will run out. And so we'll be needing to reach out, find a new appointment for, for that board. So with that, that concludes my report.
Okay. Or go on. I don't know, Sarah, can you get ahold of Justin? Probably we can get, start the highway tracking meeting earlier. Is that Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also had the opportunity to attend and serve at the employee appreciation picnic. That's always such a great day. Thank you to the, I believe it's the Strive Committee and the department heads for making that happen. I'll say that while he did a good job, I'm not sure if Commissioner Evinger sold enough veggie burgers to fulfill his quota, but I'll, I'll let that pass since he was slinging hot dogs fairly rapidly, so good job on that. I also attended the MCC JPA committee meeting as Commissioner Campbell discussed. We had updates on property acquisition status reports and did approve, as said, those four appraisal reviews. And then did approve one contract, assignment agreement. If, I believe all those documents are online. Some folks have asked for the presentation on, on the property acquisition status report and it is quite interesting to see how that footprint is evolving, so good things to report there. I attended, excuse me, a Metro Cog Executive Committee meeting where we worked to approve a short-term contract agreement for our remixed software contracting firm. The reason it's a short term is we're waiting on some final documentations from North Dakota DOT to approve the long-term piece. That was the only item on the agenda for that. And yesterday did attend the, the first meeting that the building committee had for, not building committee, I'm not sure what this committee was called, but for the DMV construction. Lots of great information provided from our DMV group and our architects. There are a few small items that we can address with the state's issues. Also noting that they won't be in that building for at least five years. And so making sure that we're planning for growth and for appropriate flow for residents is really important. Really exciting to get that going. And then also attended the withdrawal management detox facility construction meeting. We will have some, there's been some smaller change orders that will be coming to this board. Worked to, you know, as a reminder, there are times where the commissioners on the committees need to do short-term approvals for some change orders if it's substantial savings or time is of the essence for the, the county on that one. And discussed a little bit how the, the protocol will go if that needs to happen. Typically with construction meetings on a Monday, it's too late to get it on the agenda for the board, so likely the board will have it at the following board meeting. And noted that they'll be pouring slabs here by the end of August, or July, and agreed hoping to have that enclosed before winter. But I did hear a date of potentially next July or August for opening, so that's really exciting. And we are receiving every Friday updates on the construction progress, so hoping that Steve can forward that to the rest of you as they're quite interesting to look at. And as I do every year, this week is an exciting week for Clay County because it is the kickoff to the Clay County Fair in Barnesville. It is a free gate, as I always say, in comparison to the Red River Valley Fair in Fargo. It's quite an affordable option for families and folks alike to attend. There are programming that happens Thursday through Sunday, so lots of things going on. As noted, Government Day will be on Friday, the 28th. So if you are there, stop on at the Open Class Building and visit, because I know we have some department heads, departments that will be represented by that. And yeah, my shameless plug is that there are a lot of great four-age kids that have put a lot of work in all year long to bring their projects to the fair, so go support them in Barnesville. That concludes my report.
All that advertising won't cost them anything then, okay.
No. They do get county funding, so I think it's important that.
Excuse me, I didn't really have any committee assignments, meetings, but I do want to comment, excuse me, on the county picnic. I mean, on all the people that showed up, I mean, I realize there was a good preparation for it, you know, but of all the people that showed up, I think the count was over 300 or something like that, the last I heard from Mark, you know. I just, I just want to thank all the employees for coming to that, you know, it was a good gathering. And to the people who catered it, I mean, I think they were ready to do some wedding catering and stuff like that. If anybody needs that, you know, if they want some burgers and hot dogs and veggie burgers, I think they're ready to serve them, so. Last night I went to the Mullen Township picnic or, or meeting. There's a good discussion. Mark Empting was there, Justin Sarm was there and Rob Kubek. I had a good discussion with Rob concerning the Road 70th Avenue North, getting some funding for that. And he said he's already got that on the list, so that was good news there. Hopefully we get some funds for that, so. Like I said, I had a good discussion with Rob. He was very interested in what's going on in the county and, you know. And that, that was my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just to reiterate, the appreciation committee for the work that they did for our picnic. Darren leads that up with the, with the group and also our department heads that weren't just there during, during the picnic, but the setup, you know, that's much appreciated. I agree, it's a great day. 27th, I also participated in the MCC JPA meeting, which has been well covered. On the 28th, we had county management. We talked about Government Day at the Clay County Fair. As Commissioner Moswell mentioned, we'll have a number of departments present, both, I guess, there from noon to four, but also the Sheriff's Department, Highway Department throughout the week, weekend. We talked about, we'll be in the process of updating our records retention policies here at the county. I talked about the market study and then also, of course, the 2024 budget. On the 29th, we partnered with the Chamber and talked about Clay County through the EdVenture event. We talked about local educators and also job service representatives about the county and what we provide here from a career opportunity standpoint, a little overview of the county. We also had Rhonda Porter, Darren Brooke, Mark Sloan, Sheriff Empting, all came and gave more in-depth views of their specific departments and their roles within the county. 29th, we had pre-budget meetings for what you heard this morning. And on the 5th, had another pre-budget meeting for HR. On the 10th, planning and zoning pre-budget meeting, which you'll be hearing next week. The 10th, yesterday, participated in the DMV kickoff meeting. Just a quick reminder, we did also, in addition to what's been shared, we did put an RFQ out for our construction management. That will, it's been in the paper for actually the last two weeks. It's in one more time. We'll be getting the actual submissions on the 31st, or excuse me, 21st. And we'll be doing interviews as a board on a team on 31st. And so I'll make sure that I get that sent to you guys to get on your calendars with the plan for board approval on the 1st. One of the things that this board asked to, to look into with the DMV project was initially, the plan was to, to have all of the work done and approved by this fall and start construction in the spring. One of the things that this board asked is to move that, which have some potential savings for the county. Klein-McCarthy did look into their, the vendors that they would utilize for the, for the estimates. They also said that they could meet the, meet the deadline for this fall. And so yesterday, we also did talk a little bit about, talked a little bit about a timeline, which would start the project on October 31st. So, so we're, we're pleased about that and there'll be more information to come there. Participated in the withdrawal management meeting that's been covered. I also met with Darren and Mr. Melton in regards to our commitment RFQs. If you recall, we had a legal service contract that was open due to resignation. We did receive several, several bids through that process and we're going to be conducting interviews next Monday with the hope to have that filled by August 1st. Yesterday afternoon, met with Sheriff Empting on a series of county issues. Also, just a note in regards to our rural water district formation discussion. AE2S is going to be having a presentation at Holly, Holly Township in Holly at 405 Sixth Street, Sixth Street in Holly at 7:00 PM. We also did send, in addition to the information on our website, social media platforms, we did send a specific email to all of the township officials directly to their homes in hopes to increase that attendance, so. And that concludes my.
Tonight, it's tonight.
Yep, and that concludes my report.
Is that a posted?
That is not a posted.
So we got to make sure that.
I, I can't as well.
You won't be there either? Okay, all right.
Frank, you'll be able to go?
I'll try and make it. I got two other meetings that I don't want to go to too.
Yeah, I can't make it, so.
Mr. Melton, you have anything for us? Ah, now we go to Sarah. Now Jackie always has a lot of tidbits for us. So I'll be expecting a few things from you. Oh, gosh, that's a short report there. Okay, thank you so much. We're adjourned.